Regular Board of Education meeting for October 28, 2019. And we'll start with our formalities. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Burton.
Here.
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We have a quorum. First of all, I want to welcome our Troop 1841. And they're going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. And if I can have your scouts come down in front. And our flag is to the right, if you'd be so kind as to lead us in the pledge.
All please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you have time?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Board, thank you for coming tonight and leading us in the pledge. I also want to acknowledge that we have members from Troop 271 present as well. This must be scout night. Thank you for coming. We appreciate all of you coming in and watching the proceedings tonight. This is our regular meeting. And for those of you who are regular viewers, and I'm talking to all two of you, you'll note that we have a little bit of a change. We've had some updates to the board table and some of the backgrounds and new carpeting. So it's just a little refresh for those who watch on occasion and can see some of the new technology that we have. And for those of you who are watching at home and you want to follow along with our agenda, you can go to lavonypublicschools.org. Highlight over, I think it's a different configuration now. I don't think you go directly to the board tab. I think, do you go directly to the board tab?
Board meeting information.
And then Board meeting information, and then you'll see the agendas and you can drop down and follow along with our agendas. For those of you who are in the audience that do want to follow along with the agenda, the door that most of you who came in is to my left, and there's a table just outside that has both the blue slips and the agendas. Anyone who wants to address the board tonight, you fill out a blue slip and hand it to any one of us, and we'll make sure that I get it and I can recognize you during audience communication. One of the other things that I always do, since I've become Board President, is I like to read what our district climate goal is. I think it sets the tone for our meetings and it sets the tone for our community. It says, "All students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another." We, as a board, feel that that is so important in our community that we do respect one another. We may have differences of opinion on various matters, but we respect each other's opinions and listen to others' viewpoints. We do that at the board. We don't always agree on issues that come before the board, but we always listen to each other's perspectives and we always come to a consensus that we can all live with. We do that with cabinet as well and the administration. And what better way to set an example for our community for us to do it, to show you that it can be done? So that's what we live by, and we hope everybody who addresses the board comes with that respect as well. So we'll start with our agenda tonight. And first is communications. Item three, Mrs. Jenkins, Points of Pride: Blessings in a Backpack. Good evening.
Good evening, President Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Oakwist. This month's Points of Pride item is an amazing community group called Blessings in a Backpack Lavonia. First, I'll begin with a bit of background. Blessings in a Backpack provides weekend food to families in need. It is a national nonprofit organization that currently serves more than 88,000 children in more than 1,000 schools across 47 states and the District of Columbia. Locally, the Lavonia chapter began with a steering committee and its inaugural, now famous, bowling fundraising event during the 2014 and 15 school year. What started with one school in 2014 is now a program that serves more than 500 children who qualify for the free or reduced lunch program at 11 schools. The schools currently served within our district by Blessings in a Backpack Lavonia include Webster, Kennedy, Cleveland, Cooper, Hayes, Grant, Garfield, Johnson, Rosedale, Roosevelt, and Randolph. And the program continues to grow with community support. We are so fortunate to have Blessings in a Backpack as a partner to serve our families. And at this time, I would like to invite Lauren Peters from Blessings in a Backpack Lavonia to join me at the podium. We've prepared a special certificate of appreciation, which reads, "Lavonia Public Schools Certificate of Appreciation, Blessings in a Backpack Lavonia for its ongoing support and generous weekend food donations to families in the Lavonia Public Schools School District, dated October 28, 2019, signed by Superintendent Andrea Oakwist and Board President Mark Johnson." There you are. And Mrs. Peters, let's give them a round of applause. And Mrs. Peters has some exciting updates to share with the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having us. We really appreciate receiving this acknowledgement. It means so much to us. The past year has been great in our new space at the old Marshall Elementary building, so we thank you again for that. It's really allowed us to grow like we've wanted to, and everyone there has been so welcoming. As Ms. Jenkins said, we're currently in 11 buildings that encompasses 12 programs with Garfield Housing, the Skills Center, and GSRP. We're looking to add another program in the next couple of months. It's really just a major labor of love for all of us. Many of us are in the schools and work with the kids every day, and you know, you start to notice the signs of hunger. You know, the more you're around them, you pick up on it. And we're just so thankful for all of the staff in the buildings because it's really those people on the frontline who are noticing things right away, who are picking up on the fact that kids are coming back to school on Mondays, not prepared to learn, not feeling the way that they should. So we really are so thankful for all of the teachers and the administration in those buildings who forward those kids to us. At the beginning of every year, a form goes out to every single child in all the buildings that we serve. Any form that comes back, we immediately start serving them. No questions asked. If you want our help, you get our help. We were at 500 kids approximately two weeks ago, and now we're actually up to 600. So we've had a large jump. That's just, you know, at the beginning of the school year, you take on a lot of new kids, and we did add Roosevelt in. As I said, we anticipate adding another school in the next couple of months. I can't say which one that's going to be yet, but obviously, our goal is to get through all of the lower and upper elementaries and take on these preschool kids as well. Our annual bowling event is coming up on November 23. We are a part of a national organization, but as the local chapter, we do all of our own fundraising here. So we really depend on our community. It costs us approximately $110 to feed each of these children each year, so we do need to raise a significant amount of money every single year. The bowling event is our major one in addition to our trivia fundraiser, which happens in the spring. So we invite you all to the bowling event. Again, it's Saturday, November 23. We did sell out last year, so we're looking to do the same this year. I will say that we're so proud to have so many LPS staff show up to our events, too. So many of the people that we work with on a weekly basis within the schools, it's great to really have that collaboration on a daily basis and to have their support outside of school, too. So we appreciate all of that. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Again, the space has made a huge difference for us and allowed us to grow the way that we need to. So again, we invite you all there, and we look forward to providing you with more great updates in the future. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
If I could add one quick thing. The website is really well done, and that is www.bibavonia.org. And it has tons of information, including how you can become a sponsor of a child.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Do we have questions or comments? Mrs. Bradford.
Where will the event take place, at the bowling?
It'll be at Maribor, where we've had it the past couple of years. They've been wonderful to us, so.
Okay, and is there a time?
It's, registration opens up at 1:00. Again, you can buy your tickets online right now through our Facebook page, through our webpage. And the actual bowling takes place from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. I will say, too, the thing that's been pretty cool in the past year or so is we've come to realize that when I release a sign up, we do it quarterly, our sign ups usually for volunteering, for packing, they fill up within a couple of hours. So I'm proud to say that we've become a really fun, great place for the community to volunteer in, and we start them very young so that preschoolers keep coming back. My daughter here, she's been at it since the beginning, too, and probably knows more than a lot of us. So I think it's cool that we're able to bring in so many of the kids within our school system, too, and provide that for them, so, thank you.
Could you speak to that for just a moment?
Yeah.
If people would like to volunteer, could you just share the process?
Yes.
Because I know you do that on a weekly basis.
If you, we pack Tuesday evenings. We pack from 7:00 to 8:00 at Marshall. We do have, you know, only so many spots available, so we have sign ups that you can go to through our website. Again, we usually release them on a quarterly basis, so you'll get a few months out there at a time for sign ups. We have about 30 or so people that come continuously, and then another, I'd say, 60 or so that rotate in. We're very lucky to have people that keep coming back. So we get a lot of, we get a lot of high schoolers who are trying to meet their volunteer hours. We get a lot of the scout groups, just young kids coming in with their parents, and it's great to see them keep coming back. I think we have to start that young with the kids. And I think for them, it's much easier for them to understand when they're helping children their own age in their own schools. And I just think you have to take advantage of that at a very young age and get them pulled in. So I'm excited that they all want to come back all the time. We have approximately, usually about 15 spots open each Tuesday. So again, that sign up, the newest sign up will be released probably in the next month, and that'll encompass like January through March, and then we do another one after that. We used to do them a whole year out, but again, it would fill up within a couple of hours, and we had a lot of people coming to us the rest of the year. So this allows for us to keep our steady volunteers, but always bring in some new interest into the group, too, so.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I was wondering if you have a wish list on your website? I know there's sometimes a few items you're looking for.
We usually, as we add new schools, we do have, usually there's a request on there for new bins. Everything is packaged, you know, individually in the grocery bags, and then they all go into the plastic tubs each week. So those plastic bins are about $25 each, so when we start up with a new school, we usually put requests in for those. Once in a while, we'll need tables or something. But for the most part, it's really just bringing in money to pay for the food. I will point out with, in terms of the transportation of everything, I really, I do want to publicly thank Two Men and a Truck for all their help because they came in at the very beginning and have donated their services. And every single time we add a new school or need any kind of change because of, you know, days off from school, or half days, or whatever they might be, they are right there. They never say no to anything, and without them, I just don't think we could have done all of this, so. It's all LPS and Two Men and a Truck.
Mrs. Burton.
A couple of questions for you. Do you take food donations, or would you prefer monetary donations so that your food is consistent?
Ideally, monetary donations work the best. We purchase our food at a discount through Meyer. We do buy the food. It's a slight discount. It does allow us to buy the specific items that we typically pack. We do have four different menus, but you'll see some of the same items popping up. But we do have a lot of groups that, you know, as an alternative, have done food drives for us. The best way to do that, though, is just to contact us through Facebook or the website, and we can provide you with the flyer and the specific items that would really benefit us. So a lot of people will choose to do that, especially, you know, within school buildings, or sometimes different offices will put stuff together for us. So again, I mean, that lowers our costs, too. So really, we're happy with whatever people are going to help us with.
And let me see here. If folks wanted to make a monetary donation but could not attend the event, how would they go about doing that?
You can do so through our website. Yeah, everything's electronic on there.
Okay, so biabavonia.org?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see here. How do volunteers know when it's time to sign up on your website? Do they, if you?
If they've been a part, we do it all through Sign Up Genius. So anyone that's taken part before or that's contacted us in the meantime and provided an email address, they've been added to that sign up list. So as soon as it's created, the email goes out to everybody. So there's also on our website, when we do have all of our spots full at the time, there's also a way to just put your information in so that you're added for the next one. So we never want to dissuade anyone from helping us and just, you know, allow them to provide us with the info in the meantime.
And then my last question, you mentioned the K4 and the 5, 6 buildings, which is an enormous undertaking. On a national basis, is this something that continues on to middle school or high school, or is it pretty much focused with the elementary school ages?
It can be the kids, the older kids. Here within Lavonia, we.
I'm not trying to push you into doing more than you're already doing. I'm just curious.
No, Lavonia Kids and Families basically handles the middle schools and high schools at this point. So we have a partnership in that, that we came in and we talked with them prior and said, where could we make the most difference? So we've stuck with the younger ones. They've done the older ones, and I think it's worked out really well for all of us.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Oakwist.
I just wanted to say how grateful we are. You've been tremendous partners, and you just continue to grow in your influence. And it's hard to believe, when I heard this year, 11 schools and now possibly 12, that's just exponential growth just in the past few years. So we're, on behalf of those 600 grateful families and many, many grateful staff, thank you.
Thank you.
To each of you.
Appreciate it. We're also going to take a short break after the next item, which is going to be item B, a district update from our Superintendent, Mrs. Oakwist.
Thanks, President Johnson. Well, tonight, I will be covering highlights from academics to athletics, from the arts to service projects of Eagle Scout candidates. So lots to cover this evening. Please join me in celebrating these Points of Pride. Again, a warm welcome to our two scout troops tonight, Troop 1841 and 271, who join us this evening to fulfill their requirement for a badge. We hope you enjoy the meeting, and we're happy to have you here. I'd like to celebrate our National Merit semifinalists who are recently named. Every October, about 1.6 million juniors across the country receive the results of their PSAT, and those who score in the top 1% achieve the distinction of being a National Merit semifinalist. We are so proud to share the names of those in our district who have earned this distinction. From Churchill, we have Vansh Amen, Alyssa Anderson, Rashiraz Chandra, and Mary Zhang. From Franklin High School, we have Olivia Melville. And from Stevenson, Leah James. These students may continue on for the process of potentially being named a National Merit finalist and to be eligible for a scholarship. So they would next need to go through a pretty extensive process and pack it that they would create and send in, but congratulations for achieving and being within the top 1% across the nation in their score on that exam. We'd like to celebrate our Lavonia Robotics, our girls pilot team. We have an all-girls team combined from our Team 6861, the Lavonia Tyrus, and 2832, our Lavonia Warriors. They became finalists in this year's competition, held just a couple of weeks ago in Bloomfield Hills. And additionally, they were part of a special feature on State Champs RoboZone. I'm sure you've seen statechamps.net, so they have a State Champs RoboZone that you can check out online or on Facebook. There's about a one and a half minute feature that features our all-girls team from Lavonia, so congratulations to them. We want to share a great achievement for Nicholas Riff, who achieved the rank of Eagle Scout on September 30. So I know that folks in this room know what it takes to get to that point. Nicholas is in Troop 742. He's currently a junior at Stevenson High School. He combined his love of music and crafting for his Eagle Scout project. He designed and built two large storage racks to house all of the new guitars received by Riley Upper Elementary School, and they are beautiful. So he's supporting our music education program. We congratulate Nicholas on this achievement and look forward to his induction. This has been a busy time for fall sports. We have a number of exciting achievements, so hang on to your hats while I run through them. The Franklin Boys Cross Country Team won their first division title in school history and the first city title since 1987. So congratulations to Coach Kozler and the entire team for their efforts. We also had two Franklin runners qualify for the state championship, which will take place next weekend. Emily Esker had a lifetime PR of 1926, and Landem Latham also qualified at regionals this past weekend to be a state qualifier at the championship, so good luck to both of them. And continuing with our great runners, from Churchill, we have Abby Hout running a PR to take fifth place and earn a spot in the 2019 Division One State Finals, along with the team overall outpacing their ranking for the regional race. The girls Churchill Cross Country Team were city champs and also KLAA Division Champions, so a terrific season for the Chargers as well. A grueling sport, and so congratulations to all of them. Stevenson Soccer, their season has been over for a couple of weeks, but it's our first formal board meeting since then. They made their way into the playoffs and made it all the way through to the district semifinal against Seehome, had another great season, so congratulations to them. For those of you who were there, it was an exciting contest between two undefeated LPS volleyball teams last week. Both Stevenson and Churchill went to five sets. It was a packed house and an excited crowd, and the Lady Spartans won for the first time against Churchill in eight years. So they will advance to the next round of the playoffs. And statechamps.net was there, and so you can catch that online as well and catch some of the exciting highlights. And speaking of playoffs, we have two of our high school football teams advancing to the first round of the MHSA playoffs. Franklin has home field advantage. They're going to face Wyandotte Roosevelt on Friday night, and Churchill travels to face Dexter for their playoff game, so good luck to both of those teams. Finally, we have, in Franklin Girls Golf, we had a state qualifier, Sophia Wagonick, who was on the girls golf team for Franklin. She finished eighth overall in the state. So I believe that makes her All-State. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So congratulations to her. And from Churchill, Helena Harris finished second overall in the MHSA Girls Golf Regional, and she also qualified for the state finals. So on to the arts. A huge congratulations to Mrs. Herring, Elizabeth Herring, who for the second year is a semifinalist for Grammy Music Educators Awards Program. She has made it to round three for the second year. She's in the top 25 out of 3,300 nominees from across the country. Finalists will be selected in December, and the winner will receive a Grammy in Los Angeles during Grammy Week in January. So be on the lookout for a wonderful evening out for you and your family or friends. Kappa's performance of "Mamma Mia" is going to take place November 15th and 16th at 7:00 p.m. and on the 17th at 1:00 p.m. That promises to be an exciting performance, and you are able to now get tickets online. So you can either go through our website or through Kappa. And Franklin Players will be performing "Anna Green Gables." That will take place the following weekend, so you have two weekends planned already for you. November 21st through the 23rd, each night at 7:00 p.m. And then finally, calling all craft show lovers, we have two of them coming up. Frost, I think they've been hosting that for.
Many years.
I don't know how long, but I know many years. Theirs will be November 2nd from 10:00 to 4:00 at Frost Middle School. And Franklin's Fall Craft Show will be November 16th. So we have your weekends filled, folks. We'd like to congratulate all of our Points of Pride throughout the district. Thank you, President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. So we're going to take just a five or 10-minute break, and we'll be back shortly. Thank you. Good evening, and we are back, and we'll move on with our agenda. Item C, 3C is written communications. I don't have any written communications. I don't believe there are any. So that'll take us to item 3D, audience communications. I do not have any blue slips. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to come forward, I don't see any. So that'll move us on to item 3E, response to prior audience communication. I don't believe there are any responses to prior. So that'll move us to item four, our consent agenda. And may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the Superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of September 23, 2019. 7A, approval of resolution for summer tax collection.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank, to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item six, personnel matters. And item A is approval of teachers. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of Lavonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and offer employment for the 2019-20 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Archibald, are you going to help us with this?
I am.
Thank you.
I had a booster chair. Could you see me?
I'm not, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. These individuals were interviewed along with other applicants for vacancies that existed in our instructional program. We believe that these teachers listed are the most qualified for the positions indicated and recommend that these individuals be approved for employment. These positions are accounted for in the 2019-2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any question or comment from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Mr. Archibald, I noticed a couple of, a few of these teachers are starting at the end of September. What provisions have we made in those classrooms between day one of school and when these folks joined us?
I'll defer to Mr. McDonald, so I don't make any mistakes, but I would, we would have either long-term subs or their current teachers in place until then.
Well, he just covered that.
So some of these were retirements that were retiring at the end of September?
Or they have resigned. Oh, these are retirements, yes. These are the retirements we have, we have had long-term subs in those positions.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of teachers. Would you take the role, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to item seven, or 6B, teachers for tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and acknowledge that tenure status has been granted to the following teachers effective on the respective date. Ai Emia, August 7, 2017. Shanid Miller, August 7, 2019. I'm sorry, 2019. Meredith Thompson, August 7, 2019. Sarah Zakeem, August 7, 2019. Mari Fox, August 18, 2019. Allison Yu, August 18, 2019. And Kathleen Nagel, August 26, 2019.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Again, Mr. Archibald.
Yes, Mr. Johnson, the requirements to earn tenure include years of service and satisfactory performance as reflected on multiple annual year-end evaluations. We ask that the Board acknowledge that tenure status has been obtained by the teachers listed.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve tenure status to the specified teachers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role? Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Item 6C is for the board's information, and no action need be taken on it. So that takes us to item 6D, retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions in appreciation for the service rendered by Kimberly Bartlett, Nellie Goble, Mary Lennox, and Dana Shaw.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Burton. Once again, we'll hear from Mr. Archibald.
Yes, tonight, these, the names, these four individuals will be retiring. These individuals retire with a combined 107.1 years of service to Livonia Public Schools, averaging 26.8 years. I'd like to offer them my sincere congratulations and ask that the board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation and recognition of their years of dedicated service to the students of Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Congratulations all. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Burton, to adopt the resolutions of appreciation for the employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item seven, our business matters. And 7B, A was included in our consent agenda, so item B, adoption of the 2019-2020 first budget amendments. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached first amended budget for the 2019-20 school year, general fund, funded projects fund, special education fund, food service fund, health and welfare fund, debt retirement funds, 2013 bond series one, 2013 bond series two, 2014 refunding bond, scholarship fund, capital projects funds, 2013 bond fund, sinking fund, technology fund, capital projects fund, and schools activities fund.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. I would add that our first budget amendment was thoroughly discussed in detail at our committee of the whole, so I assume tonight it'll be sort of an abbreviated presentation of that.
Is that a suggestion? No. Yes, it will be. If anybody's interested in hearing more dialogue on it, we do have the video out on our website that folks can, can watch.
Thank you. And Mrs. Allison will be helping us with this tonight.
Thank you. Put together a little presentation, and the first slide on this presentation is our district priority focus areas. I like to start off with that because that really is a driving factor whenever we're getting together and talking about how we can align our resources with the priorities. It's looking at what our priorities are. And these were just refreshed again this year. I know a reminder for you, you're all very familiar with it. It's student achievement, employee capacity, fiscal responsibility, and climate and culture. So as we keep those in mind, we'll move on to the next. The first thing we update in the budget is our beginning fund balance, and that's been done for all of the funds that were listed in the motion, and we had a chance to go over that last week. I'm very happy to report that our budget had a 98% accuracy rate, so continues to be in line with what you'd expect. On the revenue side, revenues came in better by $1.9 million, and the expenditures came in better by $2.9 million. And on the bottom, I've broken that down by category, and on the next slide, we'll actually talk specifically what's made up in each of those categories. First off, on the revenue side, we have a category of local revenue. The largest piece of local revenue is our property taxes. As you know, this August, our community just passed our operating millage. That's 18 mills on non-homestead property, and that brings in the largest chunk of our local tax, our local revenue. We also bring in revenue from programs such as our daycare, the preschool program, things such as earnings on investments. Those are a couple of the items. For our 18-19 budget, our property taxes came in a bit higher than we had budgeted. The Wayne County Enhancement Millage also came in higher than we had budgeted by about $145,000. And also interest on investments. The nice thing about having a little more funds in the bank and along with this market where we were able to earn some better interest than we've seen in the last few years. In terms of revenue, we also received revenue from the state. The largest there would be our foundation allowance. We saw a $120 increase per pupil for this year, which we just learned about in the last few weeks. For this past year, the 18-19 budget, our state revenue came in better by about $1.2 million, and the largest piece of that was our Section 22B discretionary payment. There was a discrepancy with the spreadsheet I was using to calculate it. That has been corrected, so I'm feeling confident that we'll be able to get that number closer for the 19-20 budget. We also have other revenue that comes into the district. Sale of property could potentially go there. We also have some reimbursements from Wayne RISA for our special ed transportation costs. RISA also reimburses us for our one-on-one paras, and that's where that revenue would be recorded. On the expenditure side, we keep this in a lot of different accounts. The largest in our expenditure side is in the form of salary and benefits, so that's compensation for our employees that are hired directly by the district. We saw some savings in salaries and benefits in the 18-19-20 budget. As I know you all know, we can't spend a penny more than what's been authorized by the board, so even in our final budget amendment, we'll keep some placeholders in there should maybe staff go out unexpectedly, and we'd have to bring in additional staff to cover those vacancies. So variety of things that could happen there. This is also where we would pay for emergency subs if somebody had to be out and we weren't able to get a contracted sub in there. Teachers would potentially be subbing on an emergency basis, and that would come out of that line item. We also have purchase services, and that would be our subs, our contracted through EDGES staff, legal costs, transportation, telephone, the mail, postage, water, garbage collection, property insurance, repairs, variety of things come out of that purchase service category. Next up is the supplies, teaching and testing materials, textbooks, gas, electrical, vehicle repair parts. For the 18-19 school year, our textbooks and teaching supply came in under what we had budgeted. We had a few textbooks that were approved by the board in 18-19, but they didn't come in before June 30th, so those are going to be recommended to be included in the 19-20 budget. And then we have other. We have capital outlays such as equipment and vehicles, taxes written off, and transfers to other funds. In this area, equipment would fall, and we had a large purchase for school buses that was approved by the board, I want to say, in February. We worked closely with the manufacturer, and right up until the end, we're feeling very confident that those would come in before June 30th, and it didn't come to be. So we did continue to include that purchase in our 18-19-20 budget, but because they weren't received by the district before June 30th, that created that variance in our budget, and it would need to be included then in our 19-20 budget. So those are a few of the big categories. We also had taxes written off. That would be if, like, local community were to go to the tax board and want to seek an adjustment in their tax base, they could potentially get that granted, and then the district would get an invoice from the city who would refund taxes to those individuals. So that number really fluctuates from year to year. Luckily, that number was down this year, so we were able to recognize some savings there. So just a few things to keep in mind on that. So that'll take us to our general fund first budget amendment. As I just went over, our revenue came in better than expected, and our expenditures also came in better than expected. So the first thing I updated was the beginning fund balance. We thought we would be starting the year with $27.1 million, and our unassigned fund balance came in right about $28 million. So the unassigned portion was in line with what we expected, but we had a few other categories which I'd like to mention. We have committed fund balance of $1.5 million as of June 30th. Again, those would be purchases that were formally approved by the board in 18-19 but not received in 18-19. So some of that we'll see in this budget recommendation for the board. We also had assigned fund balance of $1.1 million, and what that is, is a planned use of our fund balance in the next fiscal year. So for 19-20, we were assuming that our expenditures would be over and above the revenue by $1.1 million, so we were assigning $1.1 million to cover those expenditures. The last little chunk was non-spendable, $200,000. That would be in the, in the form of, like, prepaid expenditures or inventory. And then we have the unassigned of $28 million. So our beginning fund balance for this school year was $30.8 million. We also have some adjustments to the revenue. Didn't have this information available to us back in June. The state budget was approved very late in September, and so I'm happy to report that we got more in foundation allowance than what we had budgeted. We assumed the foundation allowance would stay relatively flat. We were counting on about $105 per pupil, and we thought that that would offset the decline in enrollment that we were anticipating, about 190. We assumed that it would be in line with what we saw in 17-18. Thankfully, the foundation allowance was approved, and it was a $120 increase per pupil for Livonia, and our decline, instead of being 190 students, was, we think, will be in the neighborhood of about 100 students less than what we had last year. So for us, that is an increase in revenue of $769,000 for our general fund, so that's great news. We also received other news from the state budget, that we'd be receiving an additional 2% reimbursement of our special ed costs. And so for our general fund, that equates to about a $350,000 increase to reimburse us for those currently unreimbursed special ed costs in the general fund. Last but not least, before the school year started, we worked with Wayne RISA to come up with an estimate on our Wayne County Enhancement Millage for 19-20. We had assumed that property tax values across Wayne County would go up about 2%, and we learned in September that those rates went up higher than 2%. And the nice thing about the Wayne County Enhancement Millage is even with the increases in taxable values, they aren't required to be rolled back like other millages are. So when the property tax goes up, that means that's more dollars for the district. So we are estimating that'll be about $400,000 more than what we budgeted. So lots of great news all around. With our fund balance ending where it did for the 18-19 budget year, I'm also recommending that we consider placing the second half of NANKEN, the sale of property, into our capital projects fund to align with our board policy and administrative procedures. We recognize that that sale of property is one-time revenue, so that's putting that into a category for some one-time expenditures. With that, I'll move on to the expenditure side. We kind of touched upon this on some of our, what our normal process is. So typically in October, I'm bringing, bringing the budget, a budget update, not necessarily a formal amendment for voting on, but this year, in light of that additional revenue, we thought it would be responsible for us to bring forth some additional expenditures to help support our students and staff. So we had the opportunity to talk about that at length during our study session and our committee meeting. Just a few things of highlight, putting in some early elementary supports, some instructional supply increases that we want focused on classroom, increasing classroom libraries, some things to help support our elective areas such as art, PE, music. Also, some supplies for beautification around our schools. As part of our climate and culture, we take pride in having beautiful places to come and work and learn, and so putting some money aside to help support our buildings and that. We also talked about putting additional mental health supports in place for the rest of this year. Also talked about expanding some of our professional development opportunities for our staff. And we also talked about health insurance increases for our employees. We know health insurance costs can be felt by so many, and we thought that this is something that we can do to help support our employees and help alleviate some of that burden of the increasing insurance costs. So you'll see in this budget amendment that spread across the various functions. I do want to clarify that this budget amendment didn't involve going into the same level of detail that I normally do for a budget amendment. In our general fund, we have roughly 3,500 accounts, so that takes a bit of time to go through. So this budget amendment is really, the first focus is updating the beginning fund balance to know how much we really do have to start the school year off with, and then getting the board's approval for some of these additional expenditures we've had the chance to go over with you. So that's what we see in this presentation, this budget. I tell you, I, you know, will let you know that when we do go for our next budget amendment in the next couple of months, that I will be going through every line item, and some of those savings that we saw in 18-19 will hopefully have a, have an impact and have a reflection in our 19-20 budget, but that'll be reflected in our, our next budget. So those are some of the highlights. I know, again, we've had a chance to go over a lot of this information in, in detail, but I wanted to, again, kind of remind everybody what we, some of the things that we had discussed, and also give you an opportunity if there's anything more you'd like me to discuss or any questions you'd like me to answer.
Mrs. Smith, questions from the board? Mrs. Burton?
The first question is regarding special ed, that we've received more money for special education, and we've had lengthy discussions among the board and with our cabinet. But for the benefit of the public, will you explain basically, just at a high level, what our special education costs are and how much of that is reimbursed or covered by either state or RISA, and what is left for the local responsibility?
Yep, I would be happy to. So our special ed costs roughly are about $30 million, and of that, half of that is in the form of our ACT-18, the county-run programs. And for the county-run programs, we are fully reimbursed between the state and Wayne RISA. Wayne RISA Lovey's a special education millage. When we see increases from the state in special education, not all of that goes into our general fund. RISA will take that into calculation, and so if they know that we're getting some additional dollars, they'll back that off of the reimbursement they're going to give us for operating the ACT-18 programs. So that's $15 million in our center programs. And again, we run a program for the moderative cognitively impaired. We have a VI program for the visually impaired. We also have a program for the, our students on the autism spectrum. And then we also have a work skills program for the 18- to 26-year-olds. So those are funded fully between the state and the, the county. We also have about $15 million worth of special education costs in our general fund. And at the time, 28% was being reimbursed by the state, so that's about $5 million that we would get in the form of a reimbursement through our state aid, which left $10 million worth of expenditures in a general fund that were truly general fund responsibilities that we weren't receiving funding for. And so what this, what was done by the legislators is moving towards capturing some of that or reimbursing some of those $10 million of expenditures that aren't being reimbursed right now. So again, for our general fund, that'll be about $350,000. So by no means covering all of the special ed costs, but definitely moving in the right direction.
And then my other question, again, this is something that has been covered by, you know, our, our board at length and with our cabinet, but for the benefit of the public, can you explain why we have a fund balance? I, I literally was at a gathering a week or two ago and ran into someone from a neighboring community who was just, just stunned that we have to have X number of million dollars in, in their community's fund balance. And was able to, to give a little bit of perspective as to why we have a fund balance, but can, since this is your bailiwick, can you explain for the public why we have to have a fund balance? What is important for?
I would be happy to. To start too, because we are talking about such big dollar amounts, I think it's very helpful to put our fund balance in terms of a percentage, because that kind of gives us more of an idea of how we compare to other districts across the state and across the country. So just to give you a frame of reference, our ending fund, our ending fund balance was right about 20%, and the Michigan School Business Officials is a professional organization that we look to for guidance, and they recommend a 15% to 20% fund balance. So despite the fund balance looking, you know, large, it actually is what's recommended for districts. Number one reason, in my opinion, is financial stability. I know a lot of you have lived through the $470 per pupil cut that came mid-year. If you didn't have a fund balance to see you through that, that would be mid-year cuts you'd be having to make. Would it, you know, would it be in the form of larger class sizes, I'm sure? You know, could it be cuts to transportation, cuts to your athletic programs? Having a fund balance allows you time to make adjustments to those funding changes. Without a fund balance, you'd be having to make them very, very quickly. The next is from cash flow borrowing, I'd say, is another important thing. Our state aid comes in from the state over 11 months. It comes in October through August, and so for our fiscal year, we actually get two of our payments And so for our fiscal year, we actually get two of our payments after June 30th, after the year's ended. But we also don't get a state aid payment in the month of September. And as everybody knows, our teachers come back before October. They start at the end of August and are, get paid, and they come back to work. If we didn't have a fund balance or savings to draw on, that would force you to do cash flow borrowing and involve incurring interest cost. With having this fund balance, we aren't, we aren't having to do borrowing. I think the last time we borrowed was maybe back in 2016? So that's fantastic. This is also a benefit to our community. When we go to the community and talk about doing bonds, a healthier fund balance is looked at by the credit agencies as something very positive, and you get a higher, in fact, we, within the last year, our credit score, credit rating, was just increased, and they cited our good fiscal stewardship and also our fund balance, that stability that that brought to the district. So we're saving community members in the fact that when we do go for a bond, we're able to secure lower interest rates because of our credit score. I know I'm blanking on something, because there's lots of benefits to the fund balance, but those are definitely some of the major benefits.
And then we've had conversation also about ongoing fund balance. And certainly, this board has always been a target of getting to that 15 to 20, because for a number of years when we were going through the recession, we were barely hanging on. We had a, I can remember years of a 2% and a 3% fund balance, which was precarious. But this is not an ongoing goal to continue to build and build and build and build. Our goal was to get into that 15 to 20%, which is why we see some of these expenditures coming up now. And we've had to make so many cuts over the years, especially through the recession, that we're still beginning to replace the things that we had had in our district, you know, maybe 10 years or so ago. So this, the fund balance is absolutely fabulous. I'm thrilled that we're finally in the range, and we have been for the last year or two, in the range that's recommended. And it is absolutely a joy to be able to begin saying, okay, where can we replace some of these dollars into our district where it's going to make the biggest impact? So thank you so much to your whole team for the work that you've done throughout the years with all of our budgeting on a day-to-day basis. And thank you so much to our staff and our communities for being so supportive of our district and getting us through the really, really tough years that we've gotten through, and getting us back to a position where we can put back and put back into our students and our employees and our culture and our climate. And it is just a joy to be able to look at things that we can add back into a budget again.
I agree. Just echo back to the board, too. I know the board's had to make a lot of tough decisions over the last few years, and it's been able to put us in this position so that we can do these additional supports that are going to have a great impact on our students, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Frank?
I think that you, that the investments that we're making back into the classrooms are so important, and I think some of the ones that you touched base on, people will be able to readily understand why we're investing that type of thing. And I just wondered, Dr. Terrell, if she could just elaborate a little bit on the mental health support that we're providing to the class, to the students, and what we do for mental health, where people might not understand exactly what we're providing as a district for mental health, high level, really high level, as I know we have a lot of detail going on, but just high level what we're doing for mental health for the kids.
Sure. So the district provides school psychologists, school social workers, a behavior interventionist. Those are our mental health providers in our district that provide crises interventions for our students, any type of support that our students require regarding mental health, depression, anxiety, things that students may be dealing with, wraparound services for our families as well who are at risk. They work with outside community agencies as well to provide mental health supports for our students. We also have elementary support teachers, elementary secondary support teachers, as well as our high school counselors and our middle school counselors that also provide daily support for our students where they can touch base with them on their mental health issues, as well as promoting positivity in our schools as well, and making sure that they are all emotionally safe and well at our schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Other questions or comments? Just a couple of questions. As we were going through the early part of the presentation, there were two terms, I think it was unrestricted and restricted. For the benefit of the public, can you just explain what those are?
Sure. And just to clarify, is, we're talking about in terms of the fund balance?
In terms of, as I said, early on in the, your presentation, under your state revenue, it's unrestricted and restricted.
Yep, I'd be happy to. Yep. So our foundation allowance is unrestricted, meaning it can be used for any support allowed under the law. We also receive restricted categorical funding from the state. That would be in the form of 31A is a prime example of that. Those funds come into the district, and they have to be accounted for. We account for them right now in the general fund, but we have to keep track and make sure that they're only being used to support our at-risk students. And we complete final reports at the end of the year to ensure that we are, in fact, following what the, what those funds were given to us for. We also have Section 107, that's adult education funds that come through the state. Those two are restricted and have to be used for adult education costs. We also receive added costs for running our vocational education program at the Career Center. That brings in, I want to say last year, it was in the neighborhood of half a million dollars for our district, but that can't be used for general purposes. That, again, has to be set aside in separate accounts and make, we have to make sure that we're using those to reimburse those additional costs that the district is incurred, incurring running that program.
Okay, thank you. One other question, you also mentioned the Enhancement Millage. And that runs through 2022?
Yep, 2122 school year, I believe.
All right, and then that has to come up for reelection or revote, correct?
Yes.
And there have been some changes to the uses of those funds or where they can go?
That's true. Some expanded inclusions into that. Right now, it's going to the 33 districts here in Wayne County, but that's looking to change under this new law, and it would also go to public school academies located in Wayne County.
How was, how will that, if and when that is renewed, what will that look like in the future for us?
That would be a decrease to Livonia Public Schools. It would obviously still be more than what it would be had we not been loving the Wayne County Enhancement Millage, so it's still a support to the school district. But Livonia Public Schools wouldn't see as large a share of that, because the way that it works now is the property taxes are collected across the county, and they flow through to Wayne RISA. And then Wayne RISA distributes it based on your student count. So not necessarily, it has nothing to do with what district brought the funds in. So then it would be allocated based on the student count. And again, now, that would be adding in the public school academy, so our percentage of the student count would go down, and our revenue brought in from that would go down.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
One other question. With our fund balance, I understand that we have a healthy fund balance right now. And am I correct in understanding that that would carry us through 10 weeks of school, if we needed to rely just on our fund balance?
That does, that does ring a bell, and I think our auditors do touch upon that in their presentation, but yes.
I'll ask, I was going to ask. Okay. Two reports came back to back. Some of these questions kind of ran all together.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Oquist?
Thank you, President Johnson. So I just wanted to add a couple of things. What, and I think we've shared this with you at our past study session and our past committee of the whole meeting, that this is, this is really positive news for us to celebrate in Livonia Public Schools. The ability for us to be having conversations with our school staff and with our leadership and with our board, as we have these past few weeks, to talk about what, with the newest information we have, what kinds of supports can we put in place to benefit the students we have in front of us now with our schools and with our staff? And to be able to have a board that was receptive to taking a look at adding these expenditures this year, and also allowing us to begin planning for next year and what those needs might be. They're very different conversations than we've been able to have for a long time in this district. And so I have to say, as we've met as a cabinet team, as well as the conversations we've had with our leadership throughout the district, one of the things it's done is really allowed us to look back at some of those things that we did have to decrease over the years. What are the needs that continue to exist for our students, for our staff, for our schools? And what supports can we put in place now? And then what supports can we look to grow next year? Because as you said, Mrs. Burton, the idea is certainly to have that financial stability, but to also be able to use these dollars to benefit the folks that we have in front of us right now. And it's really exciting, and I think we're very grateful to be able to have these conversations very differently than we've had for a lot of years. And so that stability is a good, positive thing that we should be sharing throughout the district and throughout the community, and something for which we should be very proud.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Thank you.
President Johnson, can I just jump in? Because this was another thing that came up at the committee meeting, and I think it bears repeating, just because it really resonated. It kept coming upon the thought that this is more than we planned, but not more than we need. We're so grateful to be in this position, to be having these conversations, but it doesn't mean that the battle is over, that school funding is where it should be. We can even look back to the School Research Collaborative, and they, through their research, and this didn't include everything, like the full cost of retirement or transportation, said the average cost that we should be funding is $9,500 a student, $9,500 a student in revenue. Right now, we're in the ballpark of $8,500. So even with this increase, we're not seeing what we should be seeing. So we want to be, you know, very grateful to the legislators that passed what they did, and thankful to our community that's supportive of the district through the Enhancement Millage, but to know that the advocacy doesn't end because of the situation we find ourselves in, now that we need to continue to talk about this subject and look for the funding that we do need to make the impact with our students that we're trying to make.
Questions, comments? None. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to adopt the 2019-2021 budget amendments. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
That takes us to Item 8C, Approval of Financial Statements for 2018-2019. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the 2018-2019 audit report as presented by the audit firm of Plant Moran.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, and Mrs. Smith will help us again.
Thank you, President Johnson. I'm happy to introduce two of our auditors from the firm Plant Moran. We have with us Tom Marchesi and Dan O'Donohue, who are going to go over a presentation. We had the opportunity at our committee meeting last week to go over some of the highlights from the financial statement, and they're back to go into a little more detail. So I'll invite them up now.
Good evening, board members. It's good to be back for another year. Hopefully, it's not too much detail. We have about 13 slides to present, high-level, just overview of where the school's at from a financial standpoint. So just an introduction, my name's Tom Marchesi. I'm the senior manager on the district's audit engagement. And with me, I have my colleague, Dan O'Donohue. Dan O'Donohue, he is in charge on the engagement, oversaw the day-to-day activities over the course of the audit. So our audit spanned over three weeks of site work, and it included a week of interim work, duh, excuse me, done in July 2019, and led to the year-end field work, as we call it, in September 2019. So that allowed us to generate our audit opinion, which is included in the 56-page financial statement report that we briefed the board on last, or two weeks ago. And we also issued our single audit report. So just a high level on both reports, we issued unmodified opinions on each. We tested child nutrition and Title I in the single audit, and noted no findings to report. So again, a clean audit, in our opinion. As far as the extent of procedures for the basic audit, so as I mentioned, it's three weeks of site work. That doesn't mean we don't work on it outside of those three weeks. We have a lot of planning, a lot of procedures that we do. We come to the district, and the site work is used to ensure our risk assessments are in line with the audit approach that we deem necessary to present the board with an opinion on the financial statements. So we typically look at baseline analytics in terms of planning. We look at balances to see if anything really jumps out at us. Is there anything particularly risky that may pose a risk material misstatement? And we solicit input from board members and management to make sure that we have the local knowledge available to us to tailor our audit approach accordingly. So among the larger revenues and expenditures of the district would involve salaries and salary-related expenditures, retirement. And for that, we'll do detailed testing of certain pay periods. We'll look at analytical reasonableness analysis that involve trends and just historical data. The other side of it, we have your revenue. One of the largest revenue components is your state aid. So for that, we'll confirm with the state to make sure that your revenue numbers are in alignment with what the support suggests. So after all that, we document, it goes through various levels of review, and we compile the financial statements that are the responsibility of management and the board, and we issue the opinion that indicates whether the figures are fairly stated. So again, that brings us back to, we issued an unmodified opinion. With that, I'll lend it to Dan to take over and present the board results and the audit numbers.
So the first slide in your book, that goes over the, there we go, the governmental funds balance sheet. And this graph represents, you know, all the activities for the school district's major funds, and then the total of the non-major funds. And this year's major funds include Special Education Fund and the 2013 Series II Fund. So some of the figures we'll touch on, the general fund assets increased $9 million from last year, while the liabilities remain consistent with prior year. So this resulted in about an $8 million fund increase. The significant assets were cash and state receivable, and state aid receivable. And the significant liability is the summer payroll-related expenses for the July and August pays that were accrued as of June 30th. The special ed fund balance remained relatively consistent with prior year. The 2013 series, or Bond Series Fund, that decreased in assets, but that's by design due to the spend down of the capital, due to the spending of capital expenditures. And then Allison already touched on most of these fund balances. We have the committed fund balance, which is just approved purchases for buses, paper, textbooks that, you know, weren't recognized by the end of the year. And then the assigned fund balance in the general fund represents the portion of fund balance expected to be used in 1920, as budget expenditures were initially projected to outpace revenue. And then the restricted fund balance of 11.7 million in the 2013 Bond Series Fund, that is reserved for capital expenditures. The next slide, this is the budget to actual at a high level for the general fund. And best practices of sound budgeting would range between 1% to 3% variances. And as you can see, the district is well under 2% in all categories. The district added 8.4 million to its fund balance, which represents an increase of 37%, which is resulting in an ending fund balance of about 31 million. And then, as was asked earlier, that's a fund balance as a percentage of expenditures of 19%, which does translate to about 10 weeks of operating, 10 weeks of operations for the district, based on a 52-week year. And then the MSBO does recommend a fund balance as a percentage of expenditures between 15 to 20%. And the statewide average as of June 30th, 2018, was 13.96. And as all the reports are being submitted now, we don't know that number yet for the current year. Next slide, this shows the revenue for the general fund for this year, and it breaks down the various components. Overall, it was an increase of 3.2 million from prior year, or 2%. And as you are aware, the largest portion of funding, 72%, comes from the state. And this this is primarily the foundation allowance. It also includes categorical funding. And then there's also 12.2 million state revenue, which is designated as funding for retirement system. And this is received by the district and then sent right back out for retirement. It's out of your control, and there's always a corresponding expenditure for the same amount. The next largest component is local revenue, which is 31 million, and this is comprised primarily of property tax revenue. Some of the other categories, the other revenue of 7.3 million, that includes 1.8 million in proceeds from the sale of fixed assets and land, 1.6 million in transfers from other funds, and then 3.4 million in special education funding, which comes from Wayne Risa. The enhancement millage revenue was 6.1 million in the current year. And as you recall, it's a five-year enhancement millage, which was approved by the voters in Wayne County. And this represents Livonia's allocation for those funds over the most recent year. And this is the third out of five years, and the funds are distributed based on full-time equivalents. So as the district enrollment changes, the allocation will also change. The next slide takes a look at some of the possibly non-recurring one-time revenues. And as mentioned, we have the sale of land proceeds, about 1.8 million. And just to note, this excludes 575,000. That was not received in time this year, so that will be recognized, it was included this year, but it will be recognized last year. And then also the Wayne County enhancement millage, as discussed, of 6 million. And then this slide takes a look at the district's expenditures, and breaks them out by the object code. And as you would expect, in an organization of people, the largest component of expenditures is salaries and benefits. This represents all staff in the district. And salaries and benefits, which includes healthcare and retirement costs, that's the largest light blue, orange, and yellow portions of the graph, and that makes up 89% of total expenditures. This is comparable to last year, and also what we see in many districts are the same size. The majority of school districts are the size, it's 80% or larger, is personnel-related expenditures. And then also included in the retirement cost, the 32 million, that does include that 12.2 million of revenue from the state, which is also a corresponding expenditure. So that is included in that 32 million. And again, that amounts out of your control. That's in terms of state, it's a revenue and expenditure. The other components, both in dollars and percentages, are very similar to prior year. And then I'm going to hand it back over to Tom for the remainder of the slides.
And we did misspeak earlier. It's a six-year enhancement millage package, and it's subject to reapproval by the voters in 2021, 2022. So this next slide just offers some commentary on the Gatsby 6875 pension OPEB liabilities. These represent the unfunded portion of the Mitchers Retirement System. A couple of just high-level points on this, it's a significant estimate. So within the financial statements, you'll see sensitivity analyses, where a change of 1% in one of these assumptions could impact these liabilities by, to the tune of $50 million plus or minus. These liabilities are reported on the government-wide full accrual statements. They do not impact the fund level, and they generally do not affect the district's credit rating when it comes to bonds. Nearly all Michigan districts will show a deficit net position due to these liabilities. So the next slide just illustrates the difference between fund level balance sheet items versus government-wide balance sheet items. So you can see that at the fund level, you show $100 million in total assets versus $352 million in the government-wide. That difference is attributed mainly to the capital assets on the full accrual. And similarly, the increase in liabilities at the government-wide level is attributed to the bonded debt. And then we have the separate line item for the Gatsby 6875 impact of 363 million. And you can see that that prompts a negative net position, $256 million. And again, there's no impact to the fund level. Following slide just provides a historical trend of the general fund revenues and expenditures. As Allison alluded to earlier, in 2013 and 14, those were the district's tough years financially. So you can see that the revenue in blue was below the expenditures in red here. And since 2015, the district has slowly improved their financial position and built that fund balance. So you can see that in 2010, just to make a note, there's about $148 million in total expenditures versus $152 million in 2019. And this next slide shows the pupil counts. So what this demonstrates is that the expenses per pupil have been growing pretty extremely in recent years, whether it's attributed to inflation, growing retirement cost. But that's part of these feasibility studies that the state has done, showing that the district should have $9,500 per pupil being funded, and they're only showing 8,500. So to Ms. Burton's question from a constituent about why is it necessary to have fund balance, the final slide here just shows a couple different elements. So you can see that as of 2019, there's a 19.3% fund balance as a percent of expenditures. So one of the other metrics that the state mandates required level in order to avoid the early warning legislation oversight is 5%. And that's 5% of unrestricted revenues, but it corresponds pretty consistently with expenditures. So it is part of state regulations to have that fund balance, on top of just being good stewards of the community and building that fund balance, to be proactive versus reactive in your decision-making. So one of the other areas that we noted as well is just the district was able to realize investment income this year versus, in prior years, when you'd borrow from state aid notes, you'd be paying interest expense. And that's money that gets taken directly out of the district's classrooms without any benefit. And that's based on not having the financial stability that we had mentioned earlier. So again, the green window highlights the MSBO guidelines of 15% to 20%. And you can see that the district is right in that sweet spot at 19.3. So I meant to say earlier that feel free to interject with any questions during the presentation, but I'll open it up now if there are any questions.
Questions from the board? Mrs. Burton?
One of the things that I noticed when I was reading through your report is when you were, when you folks were discussing how districts have recovered from this $470 per student cut. I was on the board at that time, and newly on the board, and didn't fully realize the impact when our superintendent came in that day in October and said, "We just got cut $470 per student." That that equated to millions of dollars being cut out of our budget in the middle of a school year, when our teachers were in place, our classrooms were set, we were ready to roll. And that was, that was millions of dollars taken out of the budget. One thing that just really struck me when I was reading your report was that we are just now beginning to recover from that. Can you expand on that a little bit for both the board and the public?
Sure. So each year, under ideal situations, the governor will pass a budget that increases your foundation allowance. In 2011, each student, each student's revenue to the district from the state's foundation allowance was reduced by $470. So incrementally, over the past seven years now, the governor's been building up that fund balance, just to get back to the 2011 figure. So you can see by the other line graph, the growth in expenditures cost. So the trend between growth in the foundation allowance since that cut versus the growth in expenditures from that cut period, they haven't exactly aligned to the extent that they, you may have expected them to.
All right. Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. Right, exactly. So, so, exactly. So it's important for the public to know, because the education community understands, but we are just now getting back to where we were in 2011, which, which is similar to a lot of other businesses and industries and so forth, but education is certainly not exempt. We are just trying to get back to where we had been.
Correct.
And again, I give a huge kudos to our community for passing the Wayne County Enhancement Millage, because when you look at our fund balance, where we are right now, a chunk of that is because of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. Without those dollars that have come in over the last few years, that's where you see a steep increase in, in our fund balance, that we were able to utilize that for many different purposes, but one of them was financial stability for the district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Thank you, guys. Just, again, we've talked a lot about for the benefit of the public, but we've got a lot of really big numbers in here, and it's pretty high-level. But I think one of the things that I'd like to make sure that gets expressed and that you guys explain is the numbers are kind of big, but what is our assurance? And you touched on it just a little bit at the beginning, but talk a little bit about the audit process and how you review our, or audit our information to make sure that we're meeting our obligations with the state, that we're accounting for everything properly, that we have our internal controls in place, that the amount of work that you do out here depends on, again, the risk assessment of, you know, do we have internal controls in place that we can rely on? Or, you know, if they're not in place, then that means there's a higher risk, and we have to do more, you would have to do more auditing procedures in order to verify that those balances are correct, and that other things like the, some of the fund balances, there's, we audit the programs, are we meeting our federal obligations for our federal funds? You know, and can, you know what I mean? Just touch on that a little bit. To talk about just that, this isn't just about compiling a bunch of really big numbers. This is about going in and making sure what needs to be done is done, and that the, these really big numbers are safe.
Yes. So, Ms. Bonnefield, that was all helpful color, and I think you touched on a lot of it. But we offer the opinion, and we go about our audit testing through, with materiality, that that's accepted under generally accepted auditing standards. So as professionals, we use judgment to determine those materiality factors. A larger school district like yourself will have heightened materiality versus smaller, smaller districts would have smaller materiality. So we take that into account, and it's a bit of a, it can be driven by revenue, it can be driven by fund balance, it can be driven by total expenditures. So we take all that into consideration, and look at the different balances on the balance sheet and transactions from throughout the year, and say, is there something on here that could be materially wrong? And if there is, we would communicate that to the district, the board, and we would communicate it to the business office, who would make a potential adjustment. So our end product is the unmodified opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we can provide. Now, you had mentioned internal controls, so it's important to realize that we gain an understanding of the internal controls, but we don't offer an opinion on the operational effectiveness of these internal controls. So we use it to make sure that segregation of duties are proper, the safeguarding of assets are proper, the controls in place to correctly codify the account balances and how they're reported line by line in accordance with Michigan state law. So we do all these procedures, and then on over 3,000 general fund accounts. And we make sure, excuse me, we make sure that everything is in line with regulations, and that materiality and our judgment is not compromised by, any of the numbers are not misstated by a material number. Does that?
Yes, thank you. I just, you know, I think some of the questions that we get asked really relate to, are our numbers safe? Are we really, you know, following all the regulations and the state laws? And that part of your process, and the internal controls, you don't give an opinion on, yet I believe if you find us lacking in any internal controls, and you make management statements to us and suggest that we correct those, and it really makes a difference on, on how the audit goes. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Other? All your work on this, it really helps us out quite a bit. Thanks.
Well, we appreciate the relationship, and look forward to the continued opportunity to serve you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, to approve the financial statement.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. And motion carries. Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District authorize the superintendent or her designee to prepare the contract between Livonia Public Schools and Adamo Demolition Company, Detroit, Michigan, to demolish the building, commonly known as Old Perrinville Adams Elementary School, 28201 Linden, Livonia, Michigan, in the amount of $386,235, plus a contingency of $20,000, for a total authorized amount of $406,235.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers, and we're going to hear from Mr. Francis on this. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, President Johnson. I have two items I'd just like to address in this. One is the rationale for the recommendation of Adamo, and also just the rationale or reasoning of why we're bringing down the building. So first of all, we had six bidders participate in this request for proposals, which was a very nice number, we were pleased with. Adamo Demolition is the low-responsible bidder, and they actually, in the post-bid interview, it was a very good experience with them. They answered all of the questions, they had all the product and measurements correctly, and they're a very reputable company. So we are quite pleased to bring them to you. We've had a relationship with them in the past, they have worked in the district. So at this point, I just wanted to, again, say that, you know, we're very pleased to be working with Adamo Demolition and recommend them to the board for this job. With regard to the job, this building has been vacant since 2015. We do have buildings in the district that the, that the district owns. It does not have a K-12 program in it, but does perhaps have a leased tenant in there, et cetera. This is the only building that has been standing vacant for the past five years, and that can become problematic, and all the things that you might think would be problematic are fairly accurate. It can become a safety liability. It is, of course, something that we have to try to maintain, but when they run empty, they deteriorate quickly. It also can be a target for vandalism and/or a target for break-ins, which actually has happened in the past. So to that end, we are, under the board's direction, recommending to raise the building for, for just basically safety and liability purposes when we began this.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of bid results for raising Old Perrinville Adams. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to item eight, hearing from board members. And item A is our first reading of board policies. And we have three policies, policy EB, Buildings and Grounds, policy EBB, Safety Protocol, and policy EBBC. and policy EBBC, Emergency Drills. And Mr. Francis, you're going to go over these with us as well?
Yes, I will. I'd just like to start off and read through the policies each time. We had, for the community who may not have tuned into the last committee of the whole meeting, we had some conversations around all of these board policies, and what's not in the packet are the administrative procedures that do accompany some of them. But, we basically concluded on at least EB to bring it back and have the first reading, and if there were still any recommendations from the board, we would take that into account and make those adjustments per how the board would like it. But, to that end, I'll just start with reading through it. This is Board Policy EB, Business Management, Buildings and Grounds. It shall be the responsibility of the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to oversee the maintenance of district-owned buildings and grounds. The condition and maintenance of school facilities and grounds is the responsibility of the school custodial staff with support from the district's maintenance and operations departments, under the direction of the school's principal and the operations administrator. All regular practices to maintain schools in appropriate condition shall be in accordance with district practices and procedures. Upon request, the superintendent or the superintendent's designee shall provide the Board of Education with information as to the general condition of the district's buildings and grounds. Inventories of capital assets shall be maintained to protect the school district in the event of losses from fire, theft, or any other causes. All district-owned assets shall be utilized for the maximum benefit of district operations.
Okay. How's everybody? Everybody good with that language?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're good with that? Mr. Francis will bring that on at our next regular meeting for...
December, we'll do a second reading.
Second reading?
I'm sorry. I just skipped the whole month. November, we'll do a second reading. It's going fast, but it shouldn't go that fast.
Okay, then EBB.
So, we have Board Policy EBB, Business Management, Safety Protocol. The administration shall attempt to prevent accidents from occurring by taking reasonable precautions to protect the safety of all students, employees, visitors, and others present on district property or at school-sponsored events. It is the responsibility of the administrative staff to assure the safety of children while under the supervision of school district employees. The staff shall adhere to recommended safety practices as they pertain to the school buildings and grounds, special areas of instruction, student transportation, school activities, occupational safety, et cetera. Each school's principal or designated leading administrator shall be responsible for the supervision of a safety program for his/her school, including adherence to the safety drill requirements per state law. The superintendent or superintendent's designee shall have overall responsibility for the safety program of the district. The superintendent or superintendent's designee shall inform appropriate staff members of current state and local requirements relating to safety protocols.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Everybody good with that language? So, that'll be on for November's...
We'll go for November of 2019.
2018 for a second reading. Thank you, Mr. Francis. Then that'll take us to EBBC.
Yes, sir. So, we have Board Policy, Business Management, Emergency Drills. The superintendent or the superintendent's designee shall develop and implement, in cooperation with appropriate local agencies, any drills, plans, or other arrangements to meet such emergencies as fires, tornadoes, lockdowns, or other such events, natural or man-made, which require special measures for protecting the safety and welfare of students and staff in accordance with law.
Francis, are we good with that language?
Yes.
Very good. Then we'll put that on for second reading in November as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. And that will take us to item eight B, Second Reading of Board Policy GA, General Personnel. And may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy GA, General Personnel.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and Mr. Archibald, you're going to be helping us with this one?
Yes, I am. Good evening. And this is here for a second reading. It's been through both study session and committee of the whole. The first reading was on September 23, and these changes are a refresher of the previous language, using the school district's shared vision and collective commitments as the guidepost for our beliefs and actions of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
President Johnson? I do have one suggestion that I just didn't notice until I was reviewing this again this weekend. In the second paragraph, it reads currently, "The board wishes the superintendent or superintendent's designee to maintain continuously a comprehensive, coordinated set of job descriptions for positions, et cetera." I suggest that rather than the board wishes, because that's just not language that we use anywhere else, and it's really not what the board does, that we use another word, such as directs, although I'm flexible on what that word is, but, so that it would read, "The board directs superintendent," as opposed to "The board wishes the superintendent."
Comments from the board? I think that's an appropriate change. I think it's...
Requests is fine also. Either way. Wishes just kind of connotes to me hopes, would like, that would be nifty, and that's just not what the board does.
I'm fine with directs. Mrs. Frank?
I think that's a good catch, Mrs. Burton. And I think to be consistent with other, like an EBBC, we just took out, "The Board of Education authorizes a superintendent," and it just starts with the superintendent. So, do we just strike the whole thing and say, "The superintendent or superintendent's designee shall maintain..."
Fine, too.
...as opposed to, I don't see anywhere worse, says, "The board directs." Anyone to do anything?
That's fine.
Oh, yeah.
That's even better. Yep.
Did you catch those two corrections, Mr. Archibald?
Have we settled on striking the first three words of the second paragraph and capitalizing the...
Yes.
And then changing the word "to" to "shall" as the sentence goes on? So, it would read, "The superintendent or superintendent's designee shall maintain continuously."
I'm going to suggest that we write "continuously maintain" if we're going to make a change. Oh, okay.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, that sounds better.
Okay. Do you want to give a go to the final read on the second paragraph, Mr. Archibald?
Oh. Yeah, of course, I will. Do you like to read the entire thing or just the second paragraph?
Just the second paragraph.
"The superintendent or superintendent's designee shall continuously maintain a comprehensive, coordinated set of job descriptions for positions so as to promote efficiency and effectiveness in the staff's operation."
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Are we all good with that change?
Yep. That's much better.
Okay. And we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to accept and adopt a Board Policy GA, General Personnel. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item eight C, Second Reading for Removal of Board Policy. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and remove Board Policy GAK, Personnel Records.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, this policy was submitted to the board for first reading on September 23, and seeking your approval tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions, comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the removal of Board Policy GAK, Personnel Records. Mrs. Bonnefield, take the role, please.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to item eight D, Second Reading of Board Policy GBD, Professional Personnel Appointment. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy GBD, Professional Personnel Appointment.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, and Mr. Archibald again.
Yes, the first reading of the policy before you was September 23 of 2019, and we are seeking final approval this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the adoption of Board Policy GBD, Professional Personnel Appointment. May I have a, would you take the role, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Takes us to item eight E, Second Reading of Board Policy GBRG, Non-School Employment. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy GBRG, Non-School Employment.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton. And once again, Mr. Archibald?
Yes, again, the first reading was September 23, and we're seeking final approval tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? We all good with that? We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the adoption of Board Policy GBRG, Non-School Employment. Mrs. Bonnefield, take the role, please.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item eight F, Second Reading of Board Policy GBT, Professional Publishing. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy GBT, Professional Publishing.
Support.
Stereo. I have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And, Mr. Archibald, this will be your last policy tonight.
Well, and again, this was discussed at previous study sessions, committee of the whole meetings, the first reading on September 23, and we request final approval this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
I suggest that we strike the last two words before submission because they appear at the beginning of the same sentence prior to submitting. So, right now, it reads, "Prior to submitting any article for publication in which Livonia Public Schools School District is mentioned, staff members are requested to consult with the Communications Department Administrator before submission." But, we say before submission at the beginning and the end of the sentence.
Very good at that.
When I do it quietly by myself.
Do we have questions or comments?
Sounds good.
I think it makes sense, too. So, we will just remove "before submission." Any need to reread that? I don't think so because you just did so.
I'd be happy to if you would like me to.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so, it would read then, "Prior to submitting any article for publication in which the Livonia Public Schools School District is mentioned, staff members are requested to consult with the Communications Department Administrator."
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Does that sound good to everyone? Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to the adopt Board Policy GBT, Professional Publishing. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item eight G, Hearing from Board Members. And as has become customary with the board, this is a time when I open it up for final comments from my colleagues. Any comments tonight? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Johnson. I would like to commend the Livonia Public Schools Education Foundation, who are having their annual luncheon this week, and it's usually a really wonderful event. This is a super organization that does so much for our district, and I wish them a very successful luncheon. I also wanted to wish a happy Halloween to all of our students and hope that they are not only happy and have fun, but that they play it safe.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Bradford?
Yes, I would like to thank the committee who worked on putting this room together. It's lovely, and we're all getting used to our microphones and everything, but it looks great in the boardroom, and I think that's a wonderful addition to our meetings. I think it makes it look much nicer in here, so thank you. And I would also like to wish a happy birthday to Mrs. Oakquist. That's going to be happening, I believe, tomorrow? It is. So, happy birthday to Mrs. Oakquist.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford.
You're welcome. I know these things sometimes.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to thank SCOTRUP 1871 for coming in tonight and leading us in the pledge, and for TROUP 271 to attend as well. Some of them are trying to meet some of the requirements for their, I think, the communications. So, we appreciate them coming in, and particularly Blessings in a Backpack. What a wonderful thing they do for our community and the students of this district. So, thank you very much. And, Mrs. Frank?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of our staff. We just went through conferences with elementary two weeks ago and secondary last week, and it is such a unique partnership between parents and staff and the teachers, and to entrust your kids when they leave your house for seven or eight hours a day, and then to be able to collaborate with the teachers and be able to get really thoughtful and insightful information about how your kids are doing. And I think that service that we provide, I know it's a long day for our staff, but it's so helpful for the parents and for the kids, for both of us as parents and as educators to come together and really work collaboratively on how to improve our kids' overall education. So, thank you to all the staff who worked long hours to meet with many, many parents.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Anything else from the board? Seeing none, we've come to the end of the agenda. Is there any other business to be brought before the board tonight? Seeing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you.